Well-being in all the deliberations that are taken today. We pray in the name of coming before you as the people of this city, so be it.
Thank you again Pastor. Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21st, 2023.
As every member had a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion about said minutes, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members shall cast the vote. Have received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation's Child Abuse Prevention Month.
You're here to receive the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, please make your way to the front. So we got a few proclamations on the docket today. I do just want to, before we get started, just quick housekeeping. If you're someone here to take a picture of someone getting the proclamation, feel free to utilize this space up here. Don't have to zoom in from the back or anything along those lines. This is your time and your space. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Kansas. Childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas, childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnership created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community in partnership to build awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to dedicate themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Well, first I'd really like to thank Mayor Whipple and the City Council for inviting us today to recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm Vicki Roper, I'm the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Director at the Kansas Children's Service League, and we are the State Chapter for Prevent Child Abuse America. Kansas was the very first state to put into place prevention activities in the form of a state chapter, so that's kind of cool. April has been recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month since 1983, so the Reagan administration. The blue pinwheel became the symbol for child abuse prevention in 2008, and the pinwheel represents happy, healthy childhoods that we all desire for our kids. And the theme for this year's month is Building Together, which is really appropriate. Prevention happens in partnership. We practice these partnerships every single day amongst 60 agencies that have come together to form the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention. And they came together in 2008 when Wichita had a cluster of eight child abuse fatalities and have been working on this ever since. So if you're with the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, please stand. Thank you. This is Diana Shun, and she's the head of the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County. So we know that the ripple effects of the pandemic have permanently changed the landscape in the United States. We don't know yet completely what its impact will be in terms of child abuse and neglect prevention, but the risk to our nation's children for experiencing child abuse and neglect is much greater in times of extreme stress and when uncertainty is quite high. So parents and caregivers in the last few years have lost employment, lost income due to paid leave or lack of paid leave. School and business closings have occurred, which have impacted our families' ongoing health concerns, which we're all aware of, and certain childcare and homeschool arrangements, and food insecurity, just among other things. Challenging life circumstances can overload and overwhelm our parents and caregivers, and just like a vehicle that becomes overburdened with too much weight may be unable to move forward, so our overburdened parents and caregivers may be unable to provide the necessary care and support for their children. Community support and partnerships help lighten the load, they make the difference for all of our families and all of our children. We have new projects in Wichita, new initiatives that I wanted to focus a bit on. One is positive childhood experiences, which Mayor Whipple talked about in the proclamation. We've had an understanding of adverse childhood experiences for quite a while now. Positive childhood experiences will, you know, move forward in a strengths-based approach to help parents understand what they can do, schools what they can do, coaches what they can do to make a difference for our youth and children in this community. We're getting our Kansas data now, the executive summary I think has arrived in the state. The CDC has approved the data, and that should all be out shortly, and we will be making it available. And we know that positive child experiences will mitigate the impact of adverse childhood experiences. The second thing is family resource centers. We're aware that in the Wichita community, we've received funding through the Kansas Department for Children and Families for two family resource centers. One in the 67214, near northeast, zip code with the Urban League and nonprofit Chamber of Service, and one in the 67203 zip code with the Kansas Children's Service League. So one is, you know, really targeting the African-American community and the other, the Hispanic community, as we're moving, you know, forward with these family resource centers. Although, we represent all clients and, you know, everyone is able to participate. These family resource centers will be helping families and children get access to services, access to resources, and access to concrete supports like food boxes and legal services and childcare. Another way to support, you know, with child abuse prevention is family-friendly policies like paid second family leave, you know, to just help reduce stress on our parents and their role as caregivers. What you can do is help plan a pinwheel garden. The pinwheel is a visual reminder to the world what we want for our children, which is to grow up in happy, healthy environments, prepared and ready to succeed. You can reach out to Kim Osborne at our agency, her cards and your materials. She can be reached at the Kansas Children's Service League to get your own pinwheel, you know, garden kits and materials. And also follow us on social media, hashtag Building Together for All Child Abuse Prevention posts. So I also wanted to say, kind of in the final, the third area is childcare, and I don't want to mess with their thunder, but Becky Tuttle has really been our advocate. We have a childcare work group because we recognize that quality childcare is really important for this community, particularly as a manufacturing community 24/7. We had some regulations on the books that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment told us. We were the only community in the whole state that still had on the books. I talked to Mayor Whipple, he sent me the, at that time Vice Mayor Tuttle, and she joined our group and got the regulations changed. And more will be shared with you all as they recognize childcare providers in May. So, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Y E E P Financial Literacy Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Y E E P Financial Literacy Month, please make your way to the front. All right, again, if you are here to take pictures, feel free to utilize this space over here. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, Youth Education Empowerment Programs, or YEAP, a Wichita nonprofit organization founded in 1997 teaches financial literacy to those from birth to 24 years of age. Due to its success and demand, this program is expanding their facilities and partnering with other local businesses that will further enhance future possibilities for our community. And whereas, the staff and volunteers for YEAP place a special emphasis in lower-to-moderate-income communities, thus empowering them to set goals in order to be financially fit for a most productive future. And whereas, YEAP believes that financial literacy should be a core subject taught in the, to the beginning of one's educational journey so that everyone will have the knowledge and resources to avoid bad financial pitfalls and that our economy will have a better tomorrow. And whereas, YEAP has further broadened educational training and experiences to include training and courses in journalism, photography, video production, design, and videography in order to enhance opportunities for our youth. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, as YEAP Financial Literacy Month in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to know the lifetime importance of managing personal finances.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor. You know, this is a great moment, and I believe life is filled with a lot of moments from the, from graduations to marriage to starting a business. For our business, this is our moment. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this moment. The YEAP organization is about teaching financial literacy. Because of it, we want to take this opportunity for this month with Mr. Cool Money to enhance financial education for our young citizens. Mayor, we've done a survey over the last, it was over a three-year period that we're going to give to you later on this month with the outcomes of our, of the financial literacy, of the young people in our community. Just so that you know, there's a lot of work to be done. And so what we found the most is that it's not just the knowledge that they're lacking, it's the application of that knowledge. They do not have the means to make wise decisions concerning their financial affairs. I don't know about you, but growing up, I didn't know how to handle it myself, right? And that is a tragedy because we're continually to allow our young people to go further and further into debt, and that affects us all. Well, this month, as we're declaring YEAP Financial Literacy Month in April, and April is Financial Literacy Month nationally, Mr. Cool Money and the Youth Educational Empower Program is doing what we call the April Savings Challenge. We're, we've set in a goal this month, thank you Mayor for allowing this to be Financial Literacy Month, to, we're trying to get a thousand people to set a goal for a minimum of a hundred dollars, focusing in on our youth, but you can also be a part of it too. This is our April Savings Challenge. You're going to start seeing Mr. Money everywhere. He's going to be giving away prizes, encouraging lessons, going into the schools. We need your support, and the way you can support us is by texting SAVEICT to 54244. Again, we're trying to SAVEICT to 54244. There, you can set a savings goal, and we're going to do our best to help you by giving away a lot of different prizes, coupons, other businesses are going to be involved. So we're asking for your support, please, please, please. We need a thousand people to join in. I hope, Council, you guys will also set a savings goal for yourself if you haven't already, for this month anyways. We'll appreciate that. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity and allowing us to serve you.
Madam Clerk.
Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, please make your way to the front. Please bring any furry friends you might have with you. Oh, I don't see any puppies. Next time. All right, so proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in nineteen, excuse me, 1870. Whereas, Wichitaans care about the animals in our community as many of them own and live with animals as part of their families. And whereas, the well-being and control of Wichita's domestic animal population are critical to public health and safety. And whereas, Wichita's animal control officers do their utmost with limited resources and despite practical challenges to ensure that humans are protected from dangerous animals. And whereas, Wichita, Wichita's animal control officers and shelter staff work to protect and shelter animals with an exceptionally high live release rate and excellent quality of care. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, as Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to recognize the diligent work done by Wichita Animal Services to protect public health and animal welfare.
All right. First, thank you Mayor Whipple, Council, and on behalf of all of the staff at Animal Services, we appreciate the support, we appreciate the recognition. The staff, and also, when I say, I'll also say team because of all of our rescue groups, our Animal Services Advisory Board, everybody working together, they do a phenomenal job. But the folks that are out on the street every day, the ones that are in the animal control, working all the intakes, taking care of the animals, we can't thank y'all enough for all the work you do. We're proud of you, keep it up, and on behalf of the staff, thank you very much.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Jan Long, Contracted Grounds Maintenance.
All right, so we're rolling into our public agenda. For those who are new, just, we ask that you state your name, your address, and also be mindful of the time, there is a five-minute timer there, five minutes is an eternity. But if you were to go over, I'll probably give you just one of these, just ask you to complete your thought. But we thank you for being here, and your time will begin when you, when you begin, so.
Thank you very much. The bifocals don't work too well. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jan Long, I live at 3160 North McLean. I'm a 37-year resident of the Pleasant Valley neighborhood, a lifelong Wichitaan, and a 2022 retiree from the City of Wichita. I spent just under 42 years as a public servant in park planning and public works. I'm speaking today requesting the mowing of McLean Rightofway adjacent to the Pleasant Valley neighborhood. This is covered under the grounds maintenance of city property contract that you all approved on March 14th. At the March 14th meeting, the Vice Mayor asked about mowing frequencies with regard to citizen complaints. To help explain and understand the limitations of the mowing program, I've prepared a handout that the City Clerk has given to you that you may study. As a person who has written many, many agenda items and prepared many, many presentations, I know that this could be a whole workshop, so I will just hit the highlights for you today. On page two, you will find a list of the city's current six levels of service, along with maximum turf height and multiple mowing cycles. My street, McLean, in the Pleasant Valley neighborhood is currently assigned to level six, which is the lowest level of maintenance. I believe that page three best explains the differences between contracted mowing levels and the city code. The current city code does not allow any grass taller than 12 inches on private property. You will see that levels one through four meet or exceed the city code. Service level five exceeds the city code but gives a maximum turf height of 16 inches. Level six, however, places no maximum height on vegetation and mows no more than four times a year on 50-day cycles. If the mowing inspector writes a work order on day 50, the contractor under the conditions has an additional 28 days to complete the order. Consequently, stretches of right-of-way like McLean in the Pleasant Valley neighborhood, Consequently, stretches of right-of-way like McLean in the Pleasant Valley neighborhood sometimes have to wait up to seventy-eight days between mowing. On page four, I've shown you aerial photos of the Pleasant Valley neighborhood in case you are not familiar with it. We're north of Twenty-Ninth Street and west of Amaden. We have about a hundred and seventy-five single-family homes along with two schools, Boy Scout troops, and lots of wonderful residents. We're going to get fifty-four new duplexes in the near future. McLean is highlighted in yellow on the south of the big ditch. It's an asphalt street with no curb and gutter, and there are no sidewalks in the neighborhood. The city is responsible for maintaining about a forty-five-foot wide strip on the north end of the road. We use it daily for walking our dogs, exercise, children's play, and when the wind's from the south, it's a great place to fly a kite. Uh, on page five, I've shown you what McLean looks like between these mowings, and the grass and weeds routinely get over three feet tall. Uh, when it is mowed, the stalks and stubble is left along with any broken bottles, shredded cans, or trash that the contractor missed picking up. When it's overgrown, it creates a blighted appearance that results in illegal dumping, more trash, and vandalism, along with insects and pests. I pick up, as our other residents do, we pick up trash regularly, and we call in for removal of abandoned furniture, mattresses, and tires as they show up. Our neighborhood has stepped up where they can since contracted mowing began in twenty-ten. Now in twenty-twenty-three, several of us no longer have the resources or the ability to keep mowing in between the contracted mowing cycles. On page six, I've summarized my request that the right-of-way be mowed at a service level five. And our neighborhood has been very fortunate to have these people that have stepped up and done extra work for the neighborhood good. And we would like to continue to maintain the appearance and have the city restore funding to mow to an appropriate level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have, uh, councilmembers on the board for a potential question, is that okay?
Sure.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I emailed you, but I'm not sure if you got it yet. Um, we did get it approved to, um, switch this area to a twenty-eight-day cycle instead of fifteen-day cycle, so. Thank you very much.
That's wonderful, wonderful. Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Ron Kinkor, Aerial Fireworks Ordinance.
Good morning, you're welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mayor and distinguished members of the council. My name is Ron Kinker, I live in the vicinity of Cake TV. My wife and I have been working towards a safer Wichita with our support of the current firework ordinance since its inception. My wife is the author of Facebook page Wichita for a Safe Fourth. It comes as a shock to both of us that there is a movement to disregard the advancements that we were successful in implementing back in twenty-eighteen. I'd like to remind everyone what the mission statement of the Wat- Wichita Fire Department is. It's to provide our community an excellent proactive fire and life safety services through prevention, education, and protection. I'd like to remind everyone this mission statement of the city of Wichita, and that's, city of Wichita is a leading-edge organization serving a dynamic and inclusive community. As an exceptionally well-run city, we will keep Wichita safe, grow our economy, build dependable infrastructure, and provide conditions for living well. Stepping back from the current ordinance does not fulfill those mission statements, in my opinion. I attended the DAB for District Six on, eh, on March thirteenth. Battalion Chief Jose Halcades of the Wichita Fire Department made his presentation in support of the new ordinance soon to be discussed in this chamber. One of the things Battalion Chief Halcades mentioned in his presentation was a reference to an issue when the ordinance was first being implemented. The issue was an individual that had shot roman candles at the city team trying to force the ordinance, resulting in that team being forced to retreat. Battalion Chief Halcades doesn't want to send his firemen and police into harm's way. And I get that, nobody wants to do that. But if you're entering a structure through a roof that's on fire from an illegal firework or sending crews to fight a grass fire with thirty mile an hour winds, that's going into harm's way as well. And it's sure to happen if this ordinance is changed. In twenty-seventeen, the state of Iowa passed a law legalizing the sale and use of aerial fireworks. As Iowa City Gazette writer wrote an article in twenty-twenty-one covering the results of that passage in relationship to fireworks-related injuries. From May of twenty-seventeen to the end of nineteen, the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics in Iowa Methodist Medical Center Unity Point Healthcare in Des Moines treated a combined one hundred and seven patients for fireworks-related injuries. For all of twenty-fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and half a seventeen, a longer period of time before legalization, those same centers saw a combined forty-three fireworks-related injuries, an increase of one hundred and fifty percent. The severity of fireworks injuries also worsened during that timeframe, with an eighteen percent of the patients following legalization requiring amputation. Before the law changed, those trauma centers recorded no fireworks-related amputations, according to the research of the writer. This is going to happen in Wichita as well if we change the ordinance. Turning to numbers closer to home, in the twenty-twenty-one Firework Injury Statistic Report for the State of Kansas Fire Marshal, there were one hundred and seventy-nine injuries last year. One-third of those came from the city of Wichita. In nineteen eighty, or rather in nineteen, in twenty-twenty, there were a hundred and seventy-nine injuries, forty-six of which were from the Wichita area. Those numbers will increase if we change the ordinance. A step back on the current ordinance will not allow the mission statements of both, do not follow the mission statements of both the Wichita Fire Department and City of Wichita. In twenty-eighteen, when the current ordinance went into effect, the damaged property cost was estimated at forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Just last year, that cost had risen to a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The previous year in twenty-twenty was a hundred and eighty-three thousand. The city cannot control the usage of aerial fireworks due to several factors. Failure to enforce the ordinances in the past, failure to enforce the current ordinances to the fullest capability, and proximity to the relaxed firework ordinance is more close to resembling state law, for instance, Andover. The city needs help from state level to mitigate risk. Feel that the way to fix the issue is for the city to form an alliance with like-minded communities, such as Kansas City, Olathe, Topeka, and others that have issues with fireworks, to visit with their state representatives, senators, and pass legislation that better serves metropolitan communities and also takes into the account of rural areas of, of the state. And thank you for your attention to me today, I appreciate it very much. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for being here. See none as far as questions, but we appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Derek Carlton Jackson Bay, redress of grievances.
Morning, you're welcome.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. My name is Derek Carlton Jackson Bay, um, and we found, uh, at twenty-six fifty-eight East Eighth Street, this is District One. I'm here today, um, to first also say that I'm a Morse American. I really enjoyed the morning prayer this morning that they did. Did not necessarily exclude Muslims, it was kind of mentioned in there for everybody, which, you know, I appreciate. Uh, what I'll be speaking on today is, uh, three, two matters that pertain to me and one matter about CJ Lofton. And, but I'll start with Brandy Williams. Uh, I believe it was the night of November the seventh, I woke up from my home, I heard screams, and, uh, someone was screaming, "Help, help, help," when I went out to, uh, see what was going on. This lady had been shot, and she said, uh, her friend was laying down and she is injured also. So I get Brandy Williams McPherson, she did pass away, she's sixteen years old. And, um, but I'm here because the redress of my grievances, dealing with the Wichita Police Department and how that situation was handled. I did not appreciate being, uh, victimized while this young lady died, she just passed away right in front of me. And the first thing that upon arrival is that I'm being arrested. So I'm not happy about that situation at all, and I have filed, um, grievances, uh, as a torch claim. And CJ Lofton, he, he reminds me of somebody, he reminds me of me. When I was young, they used to call me DJ Raji, because DJ Derek Jackson is my name, Raji. So I feel like, what, what can I do, what can, what can I do? I need to work out my own situation first, because my family, my grandchildren, and my children, they need me. But when the youth are dying sixteen and seventeen, I, I guess I must become active, because it's my duty as a Morse American to look out for other Morse Americans, whether they know they're Morse Americans or not. As, um, I'm previ- I'm, I'm always reminded that ignorance of the law is no excuse, especially when the law applies to you. I would like, uh, read some type of, um, response. The last response I received pertaining to my wife's situation, and I'll speak on that in the end, is, um, I received a letter from, in two thousand and nineteen. So I guess what I'm really saying is, um, I, 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 that the, the things that I noted on the grievance, um, is, it seems like we need some correction with the Wichita City Police Department. I was stopped, uh, and detained, uh, returning home about one o'clock in the morning, one-thirty in the morning, I was walking. And I was pulled over and they told me the reason they pulled me over, because I wasn't walking on the sidewalk. Now, it's another person already testified or, uh, brought up that many places in Wichita, we don't even have sidewalks. And I happened to be in one area that didn't have sidewalks. So after detaining me, they, I guess, released me and I continued on my way. One time, coincidence maybe, two times, mm, something strange going on, three times, okay. I, 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 I'm seeking, uh, help from the United Nations to see if maybe it, that somebody needs to come a- and, and say, well, you know, it's other, uh, penalties. Because the United Nations, I came, I appeared to the city council, I read, um, the Declaration of the United Nations pertaining to the rights of indigenous people. And those rights include women, elderly, and those that's disabled. My wife was disabled, that was not handled at all, it was not handled correctly at all. She's deceased, as many of you know. Um, I think it's going on eleven years now. And, um, I can help, mm, you know, the youth, because, uh, once, once again, uh, when we all was young, once upon a time, and being that I know a lot of the youth is into music and different stuff like that, it is my hope that, uh, maybe we can, I can, through, uh, Morse American Society of Comprehensive Science, put together some programs or something, and even I would like to have our version of, uh, Safe Place. You know, are you familiar with that, Mr. Mayor? The, yeah.
Not as sophisticated understanding.
Well, certain places that, um, you know, the youths can go in this marked, like, this quick trip in different places, it's a Safe Place sign on that. Where they can, you know, come in. And I do have to come back, I see I'm, I'm running out of time. I do have to come back because I do want the Wichita City Council in Wichita to be aware that we do have American Muslims here, we are law-abiding, we do, we, we consider ourselves part and partial of the government. You know, the several states, we are republic, original republic. And, uh, thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your words. Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items one through six, sixteen, sorry.
All right, rolling into the consent agenda, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, items one through sixteen as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Holhaisel. Clerk will open her roll, members cast their vote. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does pass, Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated April third, twenty twenty-three.
Welcome.
Morning, Mayor and City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids dated April third, twenty twenty-three, for your presentation day are as follows. For engineering, we have the sanitary sewer reconstruction phase three Indiana Douglas to first for Amigo Excavation and Plumbing LLC in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, forty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. We have the twenty-twenty-three outsourced pavement preservation CIP Concrete Arterial Street Repairs Phase One for Conspec Incorporated DBA Kansas Paving in the amount of seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We have paving Lindale Street, Ike Street to serve Abilene Place Edition for Conspec Incorporated DBA Kansas Paving in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents. We have water distribution system, stormwater distribution, and paving to serve Cedar Dale Edition for Mies Construction Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. We have the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project Pump Station Three Backup Generator for Atlas Electric LLC in the amount of one million, one hundred and six thousand, eighty-two dollars. For purchasing, we have the per- transportation of spoils for A Plus Logistics LLC in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand. We have the ground maintenance services for production and pumping for Vernon Stolt DBA Kansas Turf Works for sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. We have the fire escape kits and systems Sterling Custom FCX Escape System for All Hands Fire Equipment LLC in the amount of forty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. We have the white and yellow pavement marking paint for Enus Paint Incorporated for two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. We have the calcium chloride pellets for Viner chemicals for point three five eight cents per pound. We have ground maintenance services for sewage treatment for Robin Hood's Grass and Landscaping LLC in the amount of eighty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We have the sewer TV inspection van for Key Equipment and Supply Company for an aggregate bid total of five hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. We have pool chemicals for United Industries Incorporated for Groups One, Two, Three, Six, Seven, Eight, and Nine, and Laugh T. Williams and Associates Incorporated for Groups Four and Five. We have the kitchen remodel for Fire Station Five for Farha Construction Incorporated in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. We have the twenty-five thousand, five hundred gross vehicle weight rating cab and chassis with one thousand, two hundred gallon water tank trucks for Omaha Truck Center for an aggregate total of three hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. We have the Riverside Tennis Center restroom remodel for Farha Construction Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. We have the half-ton pickup trucks for Donovan Auto and Truck Center for three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. We have the full-size SUVs for Fire Department for Don, Hat, and Chevrolet in the amount of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. We have the three-quarter ton four-by-four crew cab pickup trucks for Davis Moore Automotive in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. This is how to become a vendor with the city of Wichita. These are current open requests for proposals out on the street, and I would recommend to approve the bid boards as recommended and stand for any questions.
Questions for staff, Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. This may not be a question for you, it may be more for, um, manager or our fire chief. One of the bids was for a kitchen remodel at Fire Station Number Five. Isn't that one of our fire stations that we're planning on remodeling or relocating in the future? in the future? In the future? No, it's not one?
Welcome Chief.
Welcome, good morning, Fire Chief, uh, good morning councils, uh, city manager. No, Station Five is one of our most solid built ones, it's the oldest one, but it's made like a tank, so uh, we'll have to fix the inside of it, but the outside will be forever.
But it's not one of the one that we've got scheduled for renovation or re, or reload?
We'll renovate it, we're redoing the kitchen right now, we just got new garage doors probably about three years ago.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll continue to update it, but as far as its location, it's in a great location.
I was just, I was thinking that was one of the ones, so.
No.
Thank you.
The confusion may be in that we're moving Truck Five, which we talked about recently.
Further questions? See none, is there any input from the public on board of bidding contracts? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts and authorize the necessary signatures, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Holheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members shall cast their vote. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does pass, madam clerk.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning Mayor and council members, Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. The petitions for your consideration today include uh, signatures to represent a hundred percent of each improvement district under valid state statute. Skyway Sixth Edition in District Four includes new petitions for water drainage, sanitary sewer and paving improvements. Staff recommends city council approve the new petitions and budgets, adopt the new resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
All right, are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, um, I don't know, should I do a jig here until we get the full corn back or uh, go ahead and bring up the roll, madam clerk? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, uh, back for discussion? Seeing none, uh, madam clerk, bring up the roll.
I'm sorry, was there a motion made?
Here we go, madam, madam clerk, I give the floor back to the Mr. Mayor here.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Gary, I'd like to compliment you on your speed if you're still here, that was, that was a quick review. Uh, madam clerk.
We need a motion in a second, please.
Oh, we didn't do the motion in a second? Oh, all right, uh, I make a motion to accept staff's recommended action, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, have received a second, clerk will open a roll, members will cast their vote. All right, apologies, I thought. That went that quick. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does indeed pass, madam clerk.
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, fifteen twenty-three North Green
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Caitlin Nethercott with the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. The property for consideration today is in District One. By way of review, the property was first reviewed by city council on August second, twenty twenty-two and received extensions until October eleventh, and then another to today's meeting. The cases were first reviewed by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals in May of twenty twenty-two. The property's had an open housing case since October of twenty twenty-one. The property taxes are outstanding for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-one in the amount of one thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-five cents. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in April of twenty twenty-two and has vacant, been vacant for at least a year, maybe longer. Premise conditions are not maintained. The structure itself is a vacant one-story framed dwelling with a shifting and cracking concrete block foundation, rotted siding, sagging and badly worn composition roof with holes and a dilapidated front and rear porch. The property ownership did change in October of twenty twenty-two. Unfortunately, there's been no contact with the new owner. I did reach out to the attorney that handled the sale of the property to ask if he would have the new owner contact neighborhood inspection, but as of yet, we have not heard from him. And I, I don't know if there's anyone here to speak on the property today.
Is anyone here who represents this property? See none. The chair will relieve the floor to Councilmember Johnson as this resides in District One.
Thanks Mayor. I know that we made the motion to um, push this off a little bit to work with the new owners and there's been no contact at all. Uh, well, with that, uh, I would move that the city council close the public hearing, declare the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure and accept the Board of Building Code Standards and Appeals recommended actions to proceed with condemnation allowing ten days to start demolition and ten days to complete removal of the structure.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Holheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members shall cast their vote. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does indeed pass, madam clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Water production well rehabilitation.
Onto the controversial stuff. That was my joke, those are the jokes I have nowadays. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Good morning Mayor, uh, members of city council, Don Henry Public Works and Utilities. Um, the item before you for consideration uh, is a recommendation uh, to approve funds for rehab and replacement of Equus Beds wellfield infrastructure. Uh, the city's main municipal uh, supply wellfield is located in the Equus Beds in groundwater management district two in northern Sedgwick and in Harvey County near Halsted and Bentley. Uh, the wellfield um, contains a total of seventy-five water wells, sixty-one of them are utilized for municipal supply and fourteen of the wells in the Equus Beds are for aquifer storage and recovery um, operations. Uh, being such a critical component of the city's water supply, it's necessary to carefully track the productivity of each well. And uh, so we have a program in place to uh, provide careful analysis and line up the replacement or rehab with the best return on the investment. This ensures that we have a sustainable resource um, today and into the future. A work program for this funding includes drilling five new wells, plugging five wells that have outlived their useful life, and then um, rehab of an additional ten wells. And when we rehab a well, and we have a contractor pull the column pipe to access the pump, clean out the interior of the well, including brushing the well screens that uh, cover the perforated portion of the casing, we also apply chemical treatment. It, it keeps the formation around the well itself healthy as well as the interior of the well free of, of um, mineral buildup and metals and those types of things. That way we get optimal flow of groundwater into the well at, at various uh, pumping rates. Uh, the adopted twenty twenty-two through twenty thirty-one CIP includes funding in the amount of three million twenty thousand dollars in each of the years twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three to fund this work. Uh, the project, it's an ongoing project that's listed within the CIP appropriately um, called Wellfield Well Rehab. And staff requests the total amount of six million forty thousand at this time to fund this work. Therefore, I'd like to recommend um, that city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'm available for any questions that you have at the appropriate time, thank you.
Questions for staff? See none, is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench, further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Holheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does pass. Thank you, madam clerk.
Public facilities improvement projects.
Good morning and welcome.
Morning Mayor, council members, Chris Sewell, Public Works and Utilities.
This particular item is similar to one we brought back in October of last year, we're asking to initiate funds for the majority of our maintenance CIP funds. Uh, these address over five hundred facilities, they're uh, general fund funded through the CIP, over five million square feet, that's not the grand total of everything in the city, it excludes the airport of course, but um, it's quite a big amount of inventory to maintain. We use our facilities decision support tool to help prioritize where that funding goes, we generally focus on critical assets, that's fire, life safety, electrical HVAC systems, anything that's gonna shut the doors if it fails unexpectedly. But we also um, keep in mind that certain assets are also necessary to maintain the functionality of a building as well and may not be specifically fire, life safety or whatnot, so those types of projects can be included also. We also use these funds for anything that's unforeseen uh, as a project contingency. Uh, give it a moment on this wall of text here, but we're asking for five point three million of all GO funding for all of these items. Um, run down a few here, AV system enhancements, that's an annual amount of money for any AV needs that come up, we worked that with the communications department. Uh, some of these I'll cover more in depth here in a moment, the automated building controls, that's another annual amount. Um, we're about to issue an RFP for that, using some prior year's funding to set a standard uh, contract for the city that can be renewed annually, as well as beginning to finally upgrade those systems within this building, starting with the city hall. City ADA improvements also an annual funding amount for any needs that come up. The city facility improvements line, we'll talk more in detail here in a moment, that is dedicated to, sorry, hitting buttons that I shouldn't be, uh, that is dedicated to parks and rec, libraries, neighborhood city halls. Um, that used to be mentioned on the CIP line, we've taken it off for clarity, but that is where city facility improvements money is uh, focused. City hall maintenance, of course, obviously city hall needs, city hall remodels where that is different, that is when we get requests to do some office space remodels within city hall, we have new staff, there's changing in staff. Uh, one of the smaller projects we'll be doing with that is adding a women's nursing room um, within this building. Uh, culture is also in here, security lighting, uh, the fire facilities, police facilities maintenance, of course, uh, police city hall repairs, again, we'll cover that more in depth here in a, here in a second. So I'll give you some highlights of what we're doing with this. The Wichita Art Museum has a security camera system that's very aged, an old Pelco system. And recently, a couple months ago, we have a new on-call contract with Sandifer Engineering uh, for the new access, access camera system. That's what's gonna go into the Wichita Art Museum, they also have a new head of security over there that can help with uh, new sightlines, make sure that's all tightened up over at the museum. Um, also, within that city facility improvements line, as I mentioned, Orchard, Edgemore and Boston Rec Centers are going to get primarily roof replacements, but if uh, upon further inspection, we find that we can get away, so to speak, with a refurbishment of the roof, where the underlying insulation is not totally wet, it's salvageable, then we can do a um, a refurbishment of just the top layer of that roof by a number of years without having to pay for a full replacement of it. That was one of the things we worked through in the DST, it was a, an action that we could use to maximize the budget and still extend the service life of our facilities. Fire, life, safety, electrical repairs at Evergreen Rec Center, fire, life, safety, that's not just fire alarm, that's also the sprinkler system, the stand pipe, the water service that's going to the sprinkler system, all of those are aging at that facility and need replaced. Uh, Mid-America Indian Museum, the roof, it's been due for quite a while, that is gonna get replaced this year. Electrical building envelope improvements at uh, multiple Cowtown buildings like the public restrooms and various little buildings all throughout that site. When we say building envelope, you can think of it as the shell of the building, it's what keeps it watertight, roof, walls, windows, doors. And then the next two items will be with the fire facilities maintenance money, um, repair the HVAC electrical plumbing systems at Fire Station One, that's not the only fire station we're gonna be doing with this money, just highlighting one of them, as well as doing multiples of the overhead doors throughout the system. We've had a lot of issues with the overhead doors at the various fire stations, multiple work orders to repair the ones we got, i- it just makes a lot of sense to get brand-new doors in those locations. And then the last item on here, this is the police um, city hall repairs CIP line item for two hundred and fifty thousand. The plumbing in this building is mostly original from nineteen seventy-six. And when we say WPD fitness area on the fourth floor, this work is primarily focused on the locker rooms and the showers. The women's showers have a tendency to back up with the plumbing that's there, um, not great for our police staff, so this particular project will be uh, replacing the plumbing in that area and doing a little bit of interior refurbishment. So with that, we, staff would recommend we approve the projects, adopt the bonding resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item?
Good morning, Celeste Rosat, Wichita native, founder of Save Century Two, and we broaden our mission to look at how we spend city finances. So the question I have for this item is cultural facility improvements, we're being funded by this, and yet charter ordinance, which you all govern by, is supposed to use the hotel guest tax to take care of our cultural facilities, so are we giving too much to visit Wichita that we now have to tap our funds internally to support our cultural institutions? Charter ordinance created the hotel guest tax to take care of those facilities, so I'm curious why this is on the agenda. The second question I have is, are we doing fire and safety for the former library? You know, I've reported on six windows being broken into, and when is the roof on Century Two getting repaired? I thought that was a two thousand twenty-three budgeted item in the CIP, and I don't think we've even sent it out for bids yet. Those are my three questions.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, the um, cultural facilities are buildings that are owned by the city and we're using general obligation bonds, not um, guest tax for those improvements. I'll let Chris talk about the other two items if you like answers to those as well.
Sure, the uh, yeah, the funding for the TGT is being dedicated to Century Two this year in the CIP, so uh, it's all GO for the cultural facilities line item. As far as the Century Two roof goes, uh, in order to get the state tax credits, our construction plans have to be approved by the state, we sent those a couple of weeks ago, I expect approval of those any day now, soon as we get approval by the state of those construction plans, we're gonna bid them out here in the next couple of weeks probably. Um, so that takes care of the Century Two item, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the second. Library, yeah, we do repairs to that one on occasion, I think I just approved an invoice of like, it was over ten thousand dollars worth of windows uh, to repair the library. Uh, the fire, life, safety items, as it's not an occupied building at this time, it's not uh, at the very top of the list, I, I would say, but uh, it's still occupiable and there is an RFP to reuse the building. Should, should that proceed forward, we definitely focus our fire, life, safety on that building as well, but we're continuing to maintain the uh, broken windows and whatnot.
Thank you. Councilmember Holheisel.
I'd just like to say, uh, this is more discussion than a question. The Cowtown Board is ecstatic about the funding that's coming in, um, I talk with them quite a bit, so I'd just like to pass on my appreciation to staff for you guys working on this item, and I can't wait to see the improvements out there.
We'll just roll into our discussion unless there's any more input from the public on this item. See none. Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the projects, adopt the bonding resolutions and authorize the necessary signatures, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Holheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote. Have received seventy-eight votes, that motion does pass, madam clerk.
CON twenty twenty-three dash one, conditional use requests in the city for an ancillary parking on property zone TF three, two-family residential generally located within one block south of East Douglas Avenue and one quarter mile east of South Hillside Avenue.
Good morning Scott, welcome.
Good morning. So here to speak on this item, uh, and this, this is a case that you've seen before, it was previously considered uh, with a similar request, it was PUD twenty twenty-one eighteen. So, uh, in this case, the applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow residentially zone properties to be used for auxiliary motor vehicle parking. Case is being heard because there have been protests submitted against the application. In terms of the subject site, you can see it outlined there in red, subject site consists of three parcels at the northwest corner of the intersection of Oakland Avenue and Clifton Avenue, you'll notice it's just south of Douglas. Subject site is approximately zero point three five acres in size and consists of two vacant parcels and one with a single-family house, you can see that on the aerial. The majority of the site is owned TF- The majority of the site is owned TF3, although there is a mix of zoning on these three parcels, and I'll show you that in just a moment. In terms of context, the properties to the north are zoned LC Limited Commercial, developed as a commercial center with a restaurant and some vacant space. Property to the east, across Clifton Avenue, is owned GO, general office, and developed as a church with parking. Properties to the south, across Oakland Avenue, are zoned SF5, single-family residential, and develop single-family homes. The property to the west is owned TF3, two-family, and developed with a single-family house. Just a quick note, a couple of quick notes about the staff report for this item. The staff report contains information on the applicant's survey of area residents and businesses, and also a parking occupancy survey of the area. Not going to cover that in depth, just want to mention that those are there. In terms of review, on February 23rd, the MAPC recommended approval of the request subject to the 11 conditions identified in the staff report. The vote on that was nine to one. At that public hearing, several members of the public spoke, both in support and opposition. There were a number of folks for, for each. In general, the comments for support centered around improving the available capacity for all existing and proposed businesses, and they happen as Plaza immediately to the north, and reducing the number of cars parked on the street, which would make those on-street spaces available for individuals who visit or live in the, in the area. In general, the comments against supporting the application centered around concerns about setting a precedent that would promote nearby businesses to buy residential properties, convert them into parking, also wanting to reduce commercial traffic on East Oakland, and promoting on-street parking, which slows vehicular speeds. On March 6th, the District Advisory Board 1 recommended approval of the application, subject to the same conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. That vote was six to three. Again, there were multiple folks from the public who spoke both in support and some in, in opposition as well. So and the comments closely mirrored those received at the Planning Commission meeting. Approximately 150 protest petitions were received for this conditional use application. The valid protest within the protest area consisted, or made up, 27.35% of the protest area, which exceeds the 20% threshold. Therefore, approval of this request requires a supermajority, or six of seven votes. In terms of recommended action, it is recommended that the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested conditional use, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish a resolution after approval. Again, this would require six of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings, and deny the conditional use request. This would require five of seven votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, which requires a simple majority of four of seven votes. Just a quick note on process. City council policy is that public hearing for planning agenda items occurs at the Planning Commission meeting. According to the policy, the city council does not typically receive public comments on zoning items. So with that, I'll take you through some of the images and graphics. You can see the aerial here, we've talked a little bit about what's shown there. This outlined in blue is, are the properties that the applicant owns. So you can see it consists of a number of shops at front, Douglas, and then the three lots to the south. This is the zoning map. You can see that it's a mix of zoning in the area. We've got the red showing Limited Commercial, we've got the yellow showing TF3, and then there's some green in there, which is GO for general office. This is a, this is a site plan that was submitted, or a graphic that was submitted by the applicants with the application, showing the parking lot. You'll notice that there is no entrance or exit onto Oakland Avenue. There's just one onto Clifton. This is from the comprehensive plan, identifies the area for new residential. This is the protest, or the map of the protest area. You can see the area, and the ones in red, which are counted towards the percentage. And you can see there were a number of those submitted that were valid, but outside the protest area. And then this is zoomed out because we received a number of protest petitions that were not in that geographic area, so we've circled those in blue so you can kind of see those on the zoomed-out map. Here's a photo of the site. And this is the house that is on one of the parcels. This is looking across the street, looking to the south. Condominium unit to the south and east, looking on Oakland. Got a number of photos, but just to give you a sense of the area. All right, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, appreciate the presentation, Scott.
Sure.
When we heard this back in December of '21, the map for the parking lot was different. There was a drive access off of Oakland.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And so now it's just off of Clifton.
That is correct. Yep, it has been revised and changed, and there's just one entrance-exit now.
Okay. And what was the protest percentage at that time? Do you remember?
Ooh, I don't recall offhand. It exceeded the 20%, though.
Okay, but not as, it was higher than what it is now?
I, I can't say for certain.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Boobah.
We've had a lot of emails on this, both for and against, but I did notice some emails with a lot of street parking in the area. Do we, do we know about the street parking, when it happens, or how often it is, or anything like that?
We do, we did do an inventory of both on-street and off-street parking. That's included as part of the staff report and the attachments. So, yes, we found that in terms of occupancy, it was fairly similar to what we had observed before, but there's been quite a bit of discussion about the inventory that was taken, and also folks' individual observations. And the reason why is because at the time of when those occupancy counts were taken, there's been some question about other events, holidays, things that were taking place at the same, in a similar timeframe. In terms of when we see the most robust parking, I, I think it really varies. We've heard quite a few comments from members of the public about it. Obviously, those who are in favor say that parking is a significant challenge, especially on-street parking, it needs to be addressed. Those who were not in support of the application said, well, it does peak at certain times, but it's, it's overall, it's not as much of a significant issue. And so we heard comments from both perspectives on that.
Would it be fair to say it's consistent, and it does line both sides of the streets? Or, or do you think the pictures that were sent to us were just a, a one-off event?
No, I think it's consistent in that we see peaks in parking occupancy, and then we see low times in parking occupancy, given the use of the Belmont for restaurant and for gatherings. I think that we see that with what you would expect from a restaurant, that later in the evenings and on weekends is especially busy. Oh, and I would mention also lunchtimes as well, so.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, I found it, it was 33.75% in '21 was the protest. So this is less than what it was then. Just wanted to share that.
Further comments? Thank you, Scott, we're going to open up to discussion. Again, this is not, since this is a MAPC item, this is not open to discussion at this time. Those discussions have been had at the MAPC and also the Dow board, as far as public input. Therefore, we will continue with discussion at the bench. There are further discussion on this item. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Scott, for the presentation. I think my concern is the housing piece, the precedence that it sets for changing the residential zoning in a popular neighborhood for a parking lot. My personal opinion is I think it's heading in the wrong direction to fill the housing deficit. We have to meet the need for all the new jobs coming to Wichita. So that's kind of my, my thoughts to share.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then the chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson as this item resides in District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. This has been an item that has garnered robust community discussion throughout the city, and especially in College Hill. Some of the differences, though, this time, unlike in 2021, and Councilmember Fry just pointed it out, is there's greater support for this lot than last time, whether it was surveys, emails, phone calls. We're seeing more support in the area for this project. I also would say that the applicant, I believe, did their due diligence to try to address the concerns of the members of College Hill, whether it's the screening specifically brought up by a few of the immediate neighbors, concerned about lights going into their home, whether it was the entry and exit onto Oakland, which now this proposed lot would match the other lot, which is down the street. And unfortunately, there is a precedent set north of Oakland that there is residential as well as business. South of Oakland is not the case, and I would never support development south of Oakland due to the fact that those are all homes up and down the street and across Clifton. Being that the applicant has done their due diligence, we are seeing greater support for this. And even with some of the cards that the applicant had, those who, some of those who were against it were against it due to the homes being there. And many of the cards actually said, now that the homes are gone, I'd rather see something pretty there than fences in an empty lot. With that, and seeing more support, I don't see, honestly, a reason to deny this, this time, as I did the initial time when we had overwhelming opposition to this. So with that, I would move that the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested conditional use, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the resolution after approval.
I'll second the motion. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote. Have received five VA votes to two nay votes, that motion does fail. Madam Clerk.
Media buying and planning services, search engine optimization, and social media management contract, Wichita Dwight D. Eisenhower National Airport.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. We saw the presentation last time, I don't know if there's anything to gain this time, so I'd like to make the motion to table the media buying contract for airport services until May 16th, and direct staff to draft a conflict policy before that date. This conflict policy shall require parties that contract with the city for services to refrain from contracting with political campaigns for city offices to be inserted into a revised media services RFP and any others where there was a potential for a conflict of interest.
I'll second the motion. The motion is to table this till this May 16th. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to ask Jesse, what is the impact of continuing to delay this item on the airport?
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for the question. We would be unable to do any sophisticated media buys until we have a media buyer in place. So it'd just be a little bit more limited and on a much, you know, more simplistic basis, which means we could probably run some Facebook ads and do some things, but we're not going to be able to engage in our entire catchment area to the same level that we are now. That is a concern of us with Kansas City International just opening their new terminal, doing a lot of marketing, and we have a crossover in our catchment areas, and we do have leakage that goes to that airport. And so we're seeing, you know, increased competition. We'd like to be able to keep up, and this would limit us in our abilities to do so.
Are you seeing increased efforts from KCI that could potentially immediately impact leakage to KCI now?
It's, it's hard for me to say what the media impacts would be because the data that comes with this is always delayed. But we are seeing extra efforts from Kansas City to push out marketing and to promote their air service in portions of our catchment area, for sure, yes.
Thank you. With that, I would like to make a substitute motion to approve this item and direct city staff to have a workshop on the proposed policy by Vice Mayor Hoheisel by January of 2024.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion is now to approve this item and to set up a workshop for in the future, creating the ethical boundaries that the vice mayor has outlined in his motion. Clerk will open a roll, I'll be...
This is subject to public comment?
Of course. It's a debatable motion. Do you say that this motion is open to public comment?
Is an item on, subject to, I think the public needs to be able to speak?
To the motion. Speaking to the motion of passing this item while also creating a future workshop, the chair recognizes the public. Morning.
My name is Bonnie Tharp, and I am the owner and president of Cop Media, who won the contract for media planning, buying, SEO, and social. We've already agreed to sign the language in that. We signed it, actually, after the last city council meeting. So we've agreed to not handle any political candidates in the future while we have a contract.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Come on in.
Yes, okay. I'll go back to the board then. I wanted to make sure we got all the public, so we get to the motion. Councilmember Boobah.
Thank you, Mayor. Jesse, do you have an estimate as to what kind of dollar impact that we, that the airport could be at risk at, whenever? I realize this is your big flying season, and, well, you know, when kids are getting ready to get out of school, and people are booking flights, and, and as Councilmember Johnson said, you know, Kansas City's just opened up a new airport terminal or anything. I mean, do we have any idea how to forecast what that budget impact could be if we're not, if we don't have any marketing efforts at our airport?
Well, forecasting could be difficult. I'm not prepared to quantify that for you right now. From the last council meeting we had, we were prepared with a lot of metrics to look at the past year's campaigns, to show how we're doing with each of them. We have some economic impacts that were part of that presentation as well, but you are right when you're saying that we, this is the time we would start campaigning for summer season. Summer season is part of our highest travel, it's the highest leisure travel, and that's really what's been driving the market. One of the other things is we are also going for an air service development grant from the USDOT, and that application is due in about a month. And as part of that, we need to show our local commitment and our marketing commitment to the airline. And so part of that, I have to be able to quantify those things. So if I'm not able to do as much media buying and promotions, then that does severely weaken our position with being competitive with the grant application as well as with new air service.
Also, can you tell me a little bit more about the RFP process that they originally went through whenever, whenever we went out for proposal? Did we have guidelines for that? I mean, was that proposal, I assume that proposal was for us a set season, wasn't it? And, and, and I assume you're, I, I think in the past, anyway, from what I followed, your marketing's going to change seasonally, anyway, so isn't that going to change the, the whole model?
Well, so when we went out with the RFP, we did follow the city process, and I think we have someone from procurement who could speak to the steps we took. But the agreement is for a year, three years, two-year agreements, one year? One year with four renewal options. So it's an annual agreement. Within that, there is seasonal adjustments that are made. The agreement is also structured in a à la carte type fashion, and so it's not a guarantee that you will get every single scope item. It allows us to adjust to that. So if there's ever opportunity to make seasonal adjustments for things, we can do so for each campaign. And so that process went through the, the, the public advertisement, the selection, you know, occurred with three candidates submitting. Two actually interviewed and showed up for it. One was selected out of that, which also set us up for negotiating an agreement, which, you know, Bonnie just mentioned to you all, that we have two different versions, and one includes some additional language on there for future actions and restrictions.
Thank you very much. And I guess, I don't know, staff wants to answer this, or the vice mayor wants to answer this? I want to better understand the ethical concerns that will impact our airport and travel.
Councilmember Ballard. Sorry, Vice Mayor... Sorry, Vice Mayor Hoheisel, Councilmember, a councilmember doesn't have the authority to supersede the, the current list of, of speakers. We don't delegate our time to other members. Therefore, Councilmember Ballard is on the board, and then I will get to Council, Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Okay, well, I did say city staff or the vice mayor, so anyone that would help me better understand the ethical issue, I'd like to.
So someone who would like to explain the ethical issue to Councilmember Boobah.
I want to understand the ethical issue, and I want to understand how it impacts our, our marketing contracts with the, with the airport. And, and, and I just want to understand the overall picture of what this will do to the airport and marketing of our airport and the, the summer season of the airport, the highest, highest period of, of air travel in our city.
Mayor, Councilmember, could you just clarify what ethical issue, I mean, you're, you're asking about? I know that the city has a code of ethics, the city has an ordinance, but what is the question specifically?
I was asking for clarification with the vice mayor's concern.
Well, the vice mayor's concern in his original motion was to create a, a more clear barrier or, I guess, working boundaries when it comes to contracts. So that was what the vice mayor wanted to table this item in, in order to do is to further that conversation. The current motion is to not, is to proceed with this and then to have a workshop on ethical, ethical parameters for, for contracting in the future. So that is what the current motion is. I'm sure that's what. Yeah, it doesn't pertain to contracts. It does, but our ethics policy and our ethics board holds councilmembers accountable and appointees accountable more so than people we contract with. That makes sense. You would have to, I'm not sure exactly. Is it, I guess I'd ask, and I don't, I, I get what's happening here, and I don't mean to throw jabs, but can you be too ethical? I guess would be the question. Is there, the, the motion, both motions was to discuss what is appropriate ethical boundaries, and therefore, the motion, the substitute motion, is to create that discussion. I don't know if anyone's prepared to have that discussion at this moment. I think that the hope was to create a, a space for that discussion, rather it is before this contract's passed or after this contract is passed, is basically, the, the two differences in the, in the motion seems to, when do we want to start that conversation? Do we want to apply to this contract, or do we want to apply to future contracts?
Hey, I don't know any more than what I did whenever I asked the question. Does anybody, could anybody else clarify it for me?
Well, we do have two other people on the board, perhaps they could.
Do I, Mayor?
You do, but you, do you have more to say? We got other people on the board.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking questions so somebody can clarify what the ethical issues are. What exactly is preventing us from going forward with the marketing contract that went through the R F P process? Help me understand what the ethical issues are there.
If, if I may, this is a conversation I've been wanting to have for about a year now.
Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Hoheisel. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Ballard, that we can't get to you, but we'll get to you next. Let's go ahead and recognize the vice mayor.
I've still asked the question, Mayor. You continue to take the floor for me.
I control the floor as the chair of this meeting, so we can have an orderly proceeding. It's my job. Now, if you want to defer your time to Vice Mayor Hoheisel, I'm allowing that.
No, no, I want my question answered, sir.
But I'm going to first apologize to Councilmember Ballard, because she's next on the list. I apologize to you, Councilmember. The floor is yours, Vice Mayor.
I apologize for stepping in where I wasn't. This is, this is a conversation I have had and wanting to be had for about a year now. I do have emails with our legal department where I have brought this issue up. It's, it, like the mayor said, this is a conversation I do feel like we should have. There's not only the appearance of impropriety, I, I want to make sure that there is no actual impropriety as far as favorable contracts for services rendered at the pass. So this is a conversation that I would like to have, and long story short.
Think that's not laid out in our ethics policy?
I don't believe this issue is, no.
So couldn't we amend our ethics policy to include that if we didn't think that we covered contracts?
I think that would be part of the discussion that we're going to have, hopefully, here in the next month or year, or depending on how these motions go.
Councilmember Ballard, and I thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Jim a question from our communications department. Jim, I know you and I have talked since the last meeting, but I'd like for you to explain what we talked about to the public. What is the cost benefit analysis for this contract versus bringing these services in-house this year?
Sure, thank you. And we, we have had a couple of conversations, and, and several of you have also asked about this. Do you have the slides up? I have put a couple of slides together just for your consideration. Different one. Is it at the bottom back of this, Jesse? Oh, this is me. So when we talk about if we were to bring services internally to cover what our external media company provides now, when we look at it, the range of services include media planning, media placement, search engine optimization, I didn't include on here social media work, but web development services as well. These are all the services that we ask, and they are not inconsequential. Media planning is a highly specialized, very scientific, intricate device that has to get done before any of these contracts are put out there in support of our, our airport or any of the other projects that we support through media services. So why use an external agency? They have highly specialized media planning buying experience that we do not have internally. And they also offer flexible assignments so that we don't have to pay them unless, until we have a project that they would be assigned to provide service to us. They get better placement rates than what we can get if we were to do this work on our own and place the media. And they have relationships with all these media platforms, so they get better rates, they get better placements, and they understand how to do this work significantly better than anyone we have on staff currently. That doesn't include some of the specialized media tools that they, they use. Ahrefs is a S E O service that they have the ability to, to really improve S E O work so much more than what we could do internally. Or even if we added that as a software package that we would buy, we still don't know how to use it to the level of expertise that they have. Advantage Nielsen, you've heard of Nielsen, just like the Nielsen surveys, but Advantage is a comprehensive planning tool that, again, we don't know how to use internally. We'd have to hire for that. And then the software is approximately $25,000 a year on top of that. So if we wanted to bring it in-house, really what we would have to do is hire not just one person, but three people to handle different services that our media buying agent, agency does already. These are low prices that I put in here, but an S E O specialist at $50,000, a digital specialist to help with social media and more, and then the media planner at $80,000 is probably light for getting a quality senior-level person. Added loaded benefits, you're looking at $245,000 a year if we were to hire all three of these people. And if you were lucky to find a media planner who could also do S E O and other work, it's a minimum of 140 grand a year just to bring that service in, in-house. And then what do you do when that person leaves? You got to bring somebody else in and hire them and train them and get them up to speed. I pulled the numbers for, just for Cop, and Cop placed almost all of the city's advertising messaging from two, 2013 to 2022. And you can see it's a total of $2.6 million over 10 years. And then you look in the detail, there are some years where we spend under 200, 2014 is 116,000, 74,000 in 2013, which would be double the number that we're already using if we had to bring that in-house. And we don't have to spend a penny if we keep it externally. And they get these commissionable rates that we cannot get, so that in a lot of ways, they can pay for themselves with traditional advertising with a 15% commission. It more than pays for itself. So to, to me, I think the cost benefit of this is pretty clear that we'd want to use an external agency for this kind of work. That make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. This might be more a, a question for the city manager. Is there a way, I, I understand my fellow councilmembers' concerns about getting out there immediately or as soon as possible. Is there a way we can use one of the other groups until this resolution or this item is passed that, such as the Gretteman Group or Visit Wichita to take over short term?
Not an expert in this field. I do know that Gretteman can do some media buying, not the breadth that this contract anticipates. We would need to amend our contract with Gretteman because that's not a service that is in their scope with our current contract. I can't speak to the other firm that interviewed because I wasn't part of that team.
Okay, depending on what happens here today, that would be something. I would be curious for us to look into as soon as possible.
Councilmember Boobah.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Jesse, do you mind if I ask you a couple more marketing questions? I'm, I'm sure you have ways of measuring the impact on, on, on your, your marketing campaigns as far as what was successful and what wasn't. Last year, you ran the hot fairs, I believe. Can you tell me a little bit more about that, what the financial impact was to the airport?
Yeah, Councilmember, I'm sorry that I didn't have those numbers off the top of my head when you were asking earlier. They are in our presentation that we didn't get to make. But hot fairs ran last year during the summertime, and that drove airline revenues at $964,300,000. So just shy of $1 million worth of airline revenues from just the hot fare ads that we ran. Hot fairs is not a typical summer campaign. We did have a delay last year in our marketing contract, which didn't allow us to do artwork in advance for doing a, a true marketing campaign for summer. But we ran hot fairs, which is, if you're familiar with driving up and down, especially Kellogg, you'll see billboards that promote fares that are significantly reduced by the airlines to certain destinations. And we also run those online, and that allows people to see the correlation of flying out of Wichita and the low fare, and it drives a lot of activity to the hot fairs page and to a lot of purchases for summer travel.
So, so that's maybe a lot of your impulse shopping, where people just happen to see a fair out there and, and maybe jump on a trip that they hadn't planned months and months on going. They just, the compelling need to travel or the compelling causes because they've seen a hot fair, literally.
Yeah, it could be a little bit of impulse. It's a lot of, the attention of marketing is to drive consumer behavior and drive them to a specific, I see someone pulled up a slide for demonstration what the hot fairs looks like. But that's a lot of what we're doing, is trying to drive that customer behavior to trying to fly I C T first.
Okay. I, I guess I'm a little bit concerned with some of the suggestions here that we amend the current agreement whenever we, we went out for an R F P, went through the process, and, and that contract is only for a year that they went through the R F P. So this, so that would, I mean, we would kind of reset the clock to where, I, I assume you did these so that you would have somebody ready to hit the ground running and then start for the, for your major season. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so you would, it, it would just be a, a lagging effect from year to year if we, if we, you would, you wouldn't want to kick off your campaigns and, I guess, we did this in May, 30 days, June. You, you wouldn't want to kick that off toward midsummer then, would you?
Well, it would be the difference between when the contract ended and when a new one began, and whether or not we could get services. It would hamper or dampen our ability to, to effectively market to, to the catchment area.
Okay, okay. Thanks, thanks for enlightening us on the hot fairs. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to add to the motion at hand, I have no problem having ethical discussions about who we contract with. My concern is this company went through a process, they had a unanimous recommendation, and if we, you know, deny, they've already signed an agreement that is not council policy yet. But if we look at denying, delaying, and they are not awarded that, then again, we are disregarding the process that we've set up as a city. This is one of the things that, again, in 2017, when I was running for office, I continued to hear about, and I'm not blaming city staff for back then, but I am saying many in the community, small businesses, said that the city continues to remove, to move goalposts, and when people go through processes, the, the goals change, or something might change at the council level, and they feel it's unfair. We saw that with our largest infrastructure investment in the city, process changed midway, even though one company had a unanimous recommendation. And here we are again. My concern additionally with the policy is we really need to think this through, and by taking time to January to have a conversation about what a policy would look like if a company can take money from a candidate and still do business with the city. If the goal of the council is to say no to that, then what is that immediate impact? And when does this go into effect? Will that mean that we need to cancel contracts right now? Does that mean that we need to look at past candidate cycles, current cycles, future cycles? What does that mean? We have contracts with agencies right now that candidates use. For example, as someone who wants to intentionally communicate with communities of color, the community voice is a space that candidates should use, but the city of Wichita should contract with them as well to communicate with them. If we go through with a policy like that, that now disregards the community voice from either receiving candidate support, which is bad for any candidate that might want to communicate with Black Wichita, or choose between doing business with the city. I don't think companies should have to choose between either. If we're looking at the Latino community, there was a gentleman here that had a Latino publication, same thing. If we're looking at candidates paying someone to do a job, that's kind of what this market is for. If you're doing a business, that's what you do. I don't think there is a bad thing if a candidate uses one of those businesses. But I think that discussion needs to continue. I don't think that's something that can be decided today. I don't think that's something that can be decided in a month, and I'm pretty sure if I ask city staff right now, have you looked through everyone's campaign finance report from 2021? Have you looked at anybody who's filed right now that you can see? Are we doing contracts with them? I doubt any of our staff have done that. This takes time, and I would argue that if that's the route we want to go, we should take the time to really look into that and not just do that from the bench today. So therefore, that was why I made the motion to approve this contract. This company went through the process, they were unanimously supportive, they've been doing business with the city of Wichita since 2013, and if we want to have that other discussion, I think we should, but we should push that off sometime.
Any more discussion? See none. I'll just say I wish that we did have more time to discuss this. That's what I think the original motion was. It's not moving to goalposts that the vice mayor has been working on his policy for over a year and hasn't come in a quick enough manner so that we can utilize it during these R F Ps. I think that, and I just do want to say that contracts moving forward, unless there's some clause, this doesn't apply. If we were to pass this today, as is, if this motion passes, then, and then we create a, a more ethical boundary when it comes to those we contract with, that ethical boundary doesn't supersede, or doesn't actually go back to the contracts already passed, unless maybe ordinance, and there was something in the contract about that. But that, I think, is why the original motion was to put this off for a. But that, I think, is why the original motion was to put this off for a determined amount of time, make sure if they did sign something, I haven't seen that language, vice mayor hasn't seen that language, make sure that everyone i- is, uh, I think, um, comfortable, uh, moving forward, uh, and... Okay, we're gonna just keep discussion going. Uh, Councilmember Johnson again.
Thanks, Mayor. One, the concern about delaying this again is the impact to our airport and travel right now. We've delayed it once already. We are putting ourself at a disadvantage to KCI, which again, new terminal, their marketing, they're trying to take our market share. Two, very definition that I'm, uh, speaking to when it means moving the goalpost is this company had to sign a, uh, paragraph of language that they didn't have to before the process started that's moving the goalposts. Um, and a majority of the council hasn't even approved that. So they signed something that I don't think we all have had that policy discussion on. So again, those goalposts move and what I continued to hear was people would go through a process with the city. Something would change. They would have to come up with some additional information or some additional agreement or some additional insurance at the end of a process when they didn't have to do it in the beginning. So in this case, we actually have changed the process and appreciative that they signed some agreement. But again, we haven't had that policy discussion to even say that people should sign those agreements.
And I guess I respond that because of the substitute motion, we now don't have an opportunity to look at that, um, that new language paragraph that you cite that you just also admitted that you haven't been able to see. And therefore, uh, if it's language that is a, a, appropriate, um, i- if this doesn't pass, it dies. Uh, therefore, we can't evaluate that, which is why, again, the original motion was to, uh, give us time to look at that and, and, and substitute, uh, possibly a further policy discussion. I will say that, uh, vice mayor has been working on this for, for quite a while. It's sad that it didn't get out before this process began. But, uh, again, that, that's, uh, that, that I don't think should invalidate the, um, the, the goal to, to, uh, still make sure that we, we are putting up, um, ethical boundaries, make sure bringing stuff in-house that can be in-house. I, I don't think that negates the, the, uh, real concerns here. Councilmember Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. The vice mayor's been working on it for months and months. I don't understand why it hasn't been brought up in our numerous ethical discussions we've had here at the bench. I mean, we've discussed ethics so, so much here and, and I, I just have to ask a question. If we've been doing, city's been doing business with COP Media over the last ten years, have we had any ethical charges against them, any ethical accusations, any a- a- anybody soliciting city hall letting us know that they're doing some, or they suspect there's something unethical? Do we have any knowledge of that, Bob? Have you, has anything reached your office?
No, I, I don't have any knowledge of a complaint filed against COP.
Jesse, have you, have you had any? Jennifer, do you know of anything?
I do not know of anything.
Thanks.
All right, um, there's no further discussion. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote to some, uh, to pass the contract. Having received two yes votes, three no votes, one abstention, that motion does fail. Madam Clerk. Wondered Cruz.
Sorry, my computer froze. Uh, councilmember appointments and comments.
We're opening up to appointments.
Mr. Mayor. Is there a second original motion? We voted on the substitute motion from Councilmember Johnson. You should go back to the original.
The substitute motion was to pass it.
Yes.
Okay, um, I thought a motion to pass out was a motion to pass out, not an emotion to, I'm asking.
The substitute motion failed. Now we revert to the original motion on the floor.
Where? One second.
I believe the original was seconded, I believe.
It was.
My notes show a note.
It was seconded by myself. Well, I'm, I'm just deciding if I'm gonna retract my second or not and just let it go. If the, will the body is not to have a real ethical discussion about parameters, then should we even bring this back? You still support your motion? I'm with you then, all right. So the motion again falls to, uh... Can you restate your motion just for the, bring it back on to twelve? I'm gonna restate your motion so that we all...
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I moved the table, the media buying contract for airport services until May sixteenth and direct staff to draft a conflict policy before that date. This conflict policy shall require parties that contract with the city for services to refrain from contracting with political campaigns for city office to be inserted into a revised media services RFP and any others where there is a potential for a conflict of interest.
And I reconfirm my second to that motion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, to this specific motion, uh, I am, um, I'd like to know why this specific contract. We've approved several contracts this year. Why are we starting with this one?
Mayor?
Please.
Um, I haven't been aware of any contracts where people have been, uh, having a conflict of interest because of political campaigns. I would point out, we have, um, two members who, to their credit, have recused themselves from this vote. I think that shows a little bit of concern right there in itself.
Okay, I appreciate that. So I, I'll go back to my initial concern again. If we are using these resources, um, candidates, current office holders have used TV media, print media. Right now, we can go through people's finance reports and see that. So what are we gonna do about those contracts? Again, we continue to put small businesses in hardship because now you have to choose between doing your job, connecting with people from candidates, or choosing to do business with the city. And the greater concern I have with this discussion and policy is gonna be when more communities of color that are intentionally using one another in their services, uh, and also encouraging, 'cause my whole time I've been on council, I try to get people to do business with the city and all my tweets and stuff. What happens when those businesses that never cared about the city, they're inspired by somebody, they wanna help them, they pay them for their services, and then they find out about city opportunities? Are we now saying that they can't do business with the city because a candidate decided to use them for the skills that they have? And if so, I think that's us going in the wrong direction.
Um, I, I can appreciate those concerns. I do think that needs to be part of the discussion. I do think that there is a difference between media entities who have ads and, um, businesses whose job it is to contract out for some of these services. So I, I do look forward to that being part of the discussion.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so with that specifically, and I'll use this, a couple of years ago, it's either, I think it was Visit Wichita, we were talking about how they target folks. I made the comment then from the bench, how about you use a political organization? Political organizations know how to reach the people they wanna talk to. We all know how to reach constituents. And I think the numbers at the time were being questioned by some in the public. I made that suggestion. I think that's a good suggestion. What we're saying now with this policy is that company, so not a major media entity, if they were to use a Wichita-based company that helps candidates talk to people that they want, uh, to gain their vote, the targeting from them is a benefit. The city could use that benefit. This policy wouldn't allow that to happen because maybe someone used them for their campaign, but their expertise we couldn't use as a city. Again, to me, it's still the same concern, whether it's a major media organization or, uh, a small business that just does good work. I don't think they should be limited in doing business with the city. Now, if we're talking campaign finance reform and LLCs not being able to give to candidates, you got my support all day. That, that's not a big deal. Candidates should be knocking doors and getting individuals to support them. But a candidate paying a company to do some work and then that company now not being able to do business with the city, I think is a different argument.
So, councilmember, I'm just gonna jump in here, 'cause frankly, we're all saying the same. I hesitate to be this blunt, but it seems like we're saying similar things. We want our airport to be successful. We want our process to be fair and we want to be above reproach, absolutely ethical. And I think that the conversation right now on this motion and, and is to have that discussion. Now, I love that there are folks who wanna have that discussion at the bench today. I, I, I think that's, that shows that, that this is something we should be discussing even more. And I'm wondering, I would support, I, I guess, a, a different timeline i- if needed, like the goal is to have that discussion and possibly, and I don't know if, I, I don't know if there's any better way to have this discussion than, than, uh, getting the information, getting the concerns, finding out the best practices and go that route. So I think that's what, you know, I, I, that's what, I, I think you're saying something very similar to, to what vice mayor's saying, i- i- even if the votes wind up being different. I, and I just wanna point that out, that I, I do believe that, um, our goal in the end i- is very much the same. And, uh, I think right now we're gonna get into basically how to have that discussion and when to have that discussion. And if that discussion leads to policy, when does that policy, uh, be applied? And how do we, as you mentioned, avoid unintended consequences? Uh, so I, I just wanna, it, it's not much of a debate. I'm not taking, aside, I just wanna point out that I, I actually think that we're, we're very much on the same page, uh, the, the majority of us. Uh, we just gotta somewhat agree on how we move forward, uh, and, and, and make sure that, that we are, uh, still working together for the good of the community. So, uh, with that, of, of course, the floor is back, back to you.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, my, my concern with airport is just the impact to the airport right now and continuing to delay. This could have been approved in March. I don't know if COP has done any work on that summer campaign, but if not, then that could have been done. We could be out there competing with KCI. That's my concern there. I've stated my concern about what the policy could mean on that. So where I would support approving it today is because even if we approve in May, that work still has to get done. We're still delayed. There's still a potential negative impact to this year. And this discussion is one that if, if we wanna have it again, I'm fine with that. But I don't think we get those answers that quickly. And we could have a more thorough discussion going forward without impacting our opportunity right now. And I don't, and I haven't asked this, but my, my larger concern with KCI opening is if we find ourself behind the eight ball this year, do we stay behind the eight ball? Can we get in front, in front of them going forward? Or are we putting ourself at a permanent disadvantage? Again, normally I don't shout out other cities, but KCI's airport looks really nice. And I wanna make sure everybody remembers we have the glass jetways in Wichita and they should be coming out of Wichita. So that's my main concern is continuing to delay the specific contract where they had a unanimous vote, where they could be doing that work now while we hammer out the sausage, whether it's here at the bench or going forward.
Vice Mayor Holheisel.
Hey, Mayor. Just one quick point. Um, I've heard people who have gone through KCI, um, I think one time through, and they'll be more than happy to jump on board the Wichita train and come to our, our great, um, airport that way out here.
Councilmember Bluebaugh.
I, I just have a concern with what message this sends out to other businesses that fulfill our RFP process and, and, and go through everything. And, um, I, you know, it, it takes a lot of time to respond to an RFP. You've got a lot of guidelines to go through. It takes a lot of energy, a lot of preparedness. So, um, I just, I, I think it's disingenuous if we go through those processes and then we, we, we change the rules at the end of the day. So I, I do, I do feel bad for anybody that goes through that and, and isn't, isn't, isn't treated, um, fairly or appropriately.
Further discussion?
Well, the motion, I, I will say, is to have it come back May sixteenth. I'm sure if we're able to achieve the, uh, the goal of folks, we, we could bring it back sooner, uh, perhaps. So, um, 'cause that takes an act of the council if we wanted to work on that. So let's keep an open mind moving forward. This motion was to pass on trying to, I hate that I use this phrase now, like thread the needle, right? Like, how do we get folks, uh, uh, with their concerns met while also getting, moving forward with, with the, uh, goal of the airport, um, at, at the same time? Uh, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I hear concerns, my interpretation of what I'm hearing is there's concerns about this company and political work and not knowing what that agreement said. So I hate to put you on the spot, Bob or Troy or Jesse. Do you have the language that was, um, requested for COP to sign so that the body can hear it today?
I, I believe this is the language, councilmember, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, what?
Permission is...
Oh, permission is big, yes, yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry about that.
The language, as I understand it, is the contractor agrees in order to avoid the appearance of impropriety that during the terms of this agreement and any renewal thereof, it will not accept employment in or engagement for participation in any, any media campaign for any Wichita City Council member nor for any campaign for election to the Wichita City Council by any person seeking such an office, be it for district or mayoral representation.
Thank you. Uh, so I would ask, since we were discussing this at the bench, is that acceptable language to those who had concern?
I don't know. I've had, had a chance to really review it.
Bob, could you please repeat the language that you just read?
I guess, uh, Legal, can you go ahead and draft up a memo on how you believe this correlates with the concerns of the council?
Can, can Legal draft a memo? Yes.
Thank you.
Read it again. The contractor agrees in order to avoid the appearance of impropriety that during the terms of this agreement and any renewal thereof, it will not accept employment in or engagement for participation in any media campaign for any Wichita City Council member nor for any campaign for election to the Wichita City Council by any person seeking such an office, be it for district or mayoral representation.
And can you confirm that that was signed by the company?
Um, I'm not aware of that.
I see here, no, I said, so they have signed that. So that is the language. To me, my perspective, that addresses the concerns we heard about this company, which would allow us to approve and continue on in the discussion about future policy, even though council has not voted on said policy.
When'd you guys get this?
Pardon me?
When'd you guys get this new language that's been signed? And I guess, was there an attempt to reach out to the council to talk about it, to look over, perhaps give Legal a heads up so we can get a legal notice or memo? What?
It was drafted by law last week in response to the council discussion of this item.
Okay. Does anybody remember seeing? Probably not if we're just getting it read today. Okay.
Correct, yep.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my question is, um, is there a reason why we weren't given that prior to the meeting?
It was drafted in response to the council discussion and it was presented to COP to determine whether or not they would even find it acceptable. And I frankly, until today's meeting, I didn't know that they had approved it.
Thank you.
When was the last time we had this contract up? That was a few weeks ago, right? Okay, so we've had lots of time. Hopefully you look at that language. Councilmember Bluebaugh.
So, so that requirement, it, it was not required. It was just something they voluntary, voluntarily did, is that correct?
Correct. The council, the council discussed the item. There was not a vote taken on that action. That's correct.
So, so did, did staff come up with that? Did council come up with that? Did COP come up with that? Who came up with that?
No, the staff.
Staff did, okay, okay. But, but that's gonna be something that, um, was voluntarily done, like Councilmember Johnson was talking about with, um, community voice and stuff. That's not a requirement. They're just, they're just wanting to go out there and, and volunteer to do something above and beyond the requirement, correct?
That is correct because we don't have the authority to require that in a contract at this point.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, so that should eliminate all concerns, I would hope. So that should eliminate all concerns, I would hope. Okay. Thank you, sir.
I hope it does. Let's, I hope it does, once we get a chance to really dig into it and do an analysis. Is there a further discussion? All right, if not, we're voting on the motion to table this until, when was that?
May 16th.
May 16th. Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. As with the last vote, I will continue to recuse myself.
Of course. Clerk roll up in a roll, members will cast their vote. This is on Mike's motion to, excuse me, not Mike, Vice Mayor Hoheisel's motion to table this item so that we could bring it up to, to really review some of these concerns. Does every member had a chance to vote? Remember, they would like to change their vote. See, none, have received three yes votes, to two no votes, to one abstention, to one recrused, that motion fails. Back on the original.
Was the original, sir?
Was the original? Is there, back, back to the bill, is there any other? So motion to table and a motion to pass out both failed. Adam parliamentarian, are we on to the next item, or is there?
Counsel, if a council member wishes to make another motion, council member can make another motion at this time.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Again, the language I heard, I think, encompasses what we heard today, so I would move to approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor, excuse me, by, two times, Councilmember Blueba, by former Vice Mayor, I think, two times. With that, there's a motion and a second. This motion is to, I think, accept staff's recommended action. Clerk roll up in a roll, members cast their vote. Have received two yes votes, to three no votes, to one abstention, to one recrused, that motion does fail. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Moving into appointments, do we want to start off with appointments? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to reappoint all of these people to my district advisory board. Sergio Devora Naheta, Scott Lucas, Bill Washborn, Angela Martinez, Zachary Gingrich-Gaylord, Mark Baker, Lisa Tatum, Tom James, and Javin Gonzalez.
Further appointments?
I'd like to appoint my district advisory board, reappoint them, Grant Delmar, June Johnson, Jim W. Kelly, Wally Bell, Rebecca Genick, Alex Martinez, Dalton Glasscock, and I'd like to appoint a new member. He was, he was a member before, actually, he was a member whenever he was in high school, so he's coming back as an adult. Alex Garcia.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint Diana Adminton to Transit, Gary Schmidt to the Land Bank, Mike McCorkle to Sustainability. I'd like to reappoint, reappoint to DAB Ron Tracy, Mike Loop, Geneva Chambers, David Capeon, Gerald Henry, Chauncey Kemp, Gentry Thiessen, Richard Ruth, and new appointees, Aaron Santry and Jesse McDowell.
Further appointments? Councilmember Johnson, do you have appointments?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to reappoint Lori Lawrence to the Wichita Sustainability Board.
Further appointments? I'd like to reappoint Laura Lombine to the Sustainability Board and acknowledge the following appointments to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board, and that is David Esslinger, Tim Bonnell, John Hensley. Is there any more appointments? If there's no more appointments, I'll make a motion to accept the appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk roll up in a roll, members cast their votes. This is on appointments. Have received 78 votes, that motion does pass, those appointments stand. Back on announcements or discussion? See, none. With that, I'll make a motion to, oh, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to highlight, we had a really good trip to Washington DC for NLC and Hill visits. As usual, our, our visits with departments have been really good, and the conference for NLC was really good as well. Also, the conference talked a lot about affordable housing, which we, we're all talking about. So lots of good information there. I just wanted to highlight that for those paying attention.
Councilmember Blueba.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, on Councilmember Johnson's comments, we heard, whether we were talking to our delegation or other cities, everybody's facing the same problems we are, have. Inflation is the number one thing everybody's talking about, affordable housing, rising property taxes and rising rents. They were talking about in the Washington DC area, how they were trying to cap rents, and then the property taxes were continuing to go up, and, and how you, how you maneuver that. So homelessness, the same issues we have here in Wichita, it's real eye-opener to see across the United States, we're not singled out. We're facing the same issues, and we've got the same challenges as other cities. So it's a great learning experience, a great opportunity to, to reacquaint with a lot of the organizations that helped us get our WFI program done, to where we were able to do the water treatment center, to where we were able to do the things down in Plant Two. So we really, really got a lot out of the trip. So, so appreciate everybody going and everybody putting forth all the effort into all the meetings and, and the relationships that we have there that help us get some of the things that we've been able to achieve in the last several years. So thank you to everybody.
Well said. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk roll up in a roll, members cast their vote. Have received 78 votes, that motion does pass. Thank you.